He was Jack Hammer and that. The judge was in there and she wanted to shut him down. He's a big boy. Brian, go take a damn break, I said. Knock it off, I'll pee before. He went down and he picked up just screaming mad about, you know, blah, blah, blah. Pretty soon he walked back around the corner and he was, he cooled off. Sort of funny, yeah, that big old.
I wanted to thank you. Oh, he's got a lot of rage.
No, no. He's got a little reputation and he likes what he says reputation. One you wouldn't mess with. Yeah.
Did he ever go off though? I mean, he is tall.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's had some time down here. So he didn't really hurt anybody, but he could have, hold his neck. Two minutes.
So she got a spectator.
You never know.
Or loan, loan somebody loan that's late. Everybody's here. You're too busy.
All right, it's close enough. Okay, stretch your neck and dip, you can contract and, and the big thing I guess you hear is the dispatchers now. So who wants to floor?
Well, I can start.
Yeah.
Justin Huff, that's my name. Field consultant for Montana Federation of Public Employees, field consultant for these guys' unit. I believe they're already presenting us, agreed to recognize dispatchers. The contract this provided to you today reflects the name change as well. It's now the Beaverhead County Sheriff's Office Employees Association of Dispatches, who includes all the dispatchers who have covered this contract. I'm holding same, the same copy that you have there. Functionally, very little has changed from previous contract to this one that, that you have before yet, with the exception of the inclusion of dispatchers. And you see that throughout this agreement, it acknowledges not just the sheriff's, sheriff's deputies, but identified as sheriff's office employees, including deputies, sergeant, I believe, and public safety communicators. So that's something that you'll see in there, should be reflected throughout this contract to acknowledge those changes. There are probably a few things I'd like to draw attention to within the contract that would probably be reflective of a proposal that I'd like to be aware of, so you don't parse that out within, looking from the previous one to the next one, or from the previous one to this one. Jump to page 12 real quick. On a workday, work week. This is a function of very little changing, but I'd like to point that out to you. Page 12, work week. Yeah, on the very last line, alternate shifts will be considered as requested approved by supervisors. There, I believe dispatches do have, what, what were you, shifts, five eights, is that correct?
Yeah. And we do four tens right now, with the exception of one who prefers five eights.
So that, that language is strictly to allow some lag between supervisor and dispatchers to have some fluidity in their, in their contract, or in their scheduling. Other one, page 17. Section N there, the language is not different, other than identifying the sheriff's office employees versus sheriff's deputies. But just recognize that with the addition there, there is going to be dispatchers that would fall under that incentive K, where they do not qualify for that at this time. You guys don't see this education. But this would be representative of a proposal that would, some people would be subject to that. Then jump to page 19. Section J, bottom of that page. On an annual basis, employees will be allowed to be paid out for their accrued excess annual aid for which they are unable to use. Just accounts for circumstances where some units, some of the working groups there, they can't function, take time off because of the requirements of the job needs. And you don't have that then?
Yeah, that was on this and.
It was.
I circled that thing and put a big no on that. I thought we already talked about that. That needs to be discussed here.
I was unaware of that. But, so manager brought that up. It is in this, the contract.
And it's, no. Then you can finish up, we'll, I, I got it.
Those are the primary things that I dropped. It's by and large, very similar to the previous contract. The primary focus was incorporating dispatchers into that. And try, will provide you some of those.
I got one thing here, you know, on the table of contents. Article eight, compensation. Once you go back in there, I think it'd be helpful just for the speed of finding it. Section 11, in case of the previous, it says public safety communication officers. Can that be reflected in the table of contents? I've got, if you look through the table, I've looked for you.
The, the table. The, the table contents and the page numbers are wrong. I guess we should have started with that. The formatting, we didn't catch up before it was printed. So if you go to article eight, it says section 11, article eight actually starts on page 13.
Oh, I did, I tried to. I tried to figure that out.
Yeah, that.
So that has to be corrected?
Yes, the, the table of contents has to be corrected to reflect the appropriate page.
Because it, it'd be easier if it said, you know, communications officer, is that just plain Chris Bass? And then it didn't go right to that page. Wouldn't it be helpful? The rest of it is kind of self-explanatory. Okay, thanks. That's all I noticed at the start, go ahead, Mike.
Here's anything else I have there?
Anything else?
Not more. Well, let me hear what you guys think.
Any questions?
Well, I said, I went through a bunch of negotiations with you and. Yeah. Before CrossFit, I lost it last year. And I just had it circled, yes, no, already there. And that's the one big thing that popped up.
And this can always, this is not set in stone.
Let's have, this is not set in stone. Yeah, and that's just it. That vacation, in due respect, I mean, I know you guys are overworked, we're trying to get you another deputy this year. But then that makes your work, sometimes you've got to get the hell out of here. Yeah, I hate incentivize not taking your vacation back. That's a deal, probably not so much with you guys, it is with the sheriff or whatever on that. I know you're overworked and stuff, but if you don't take your vacation, we start incentivizing not taking vacation. It's just goes against my whole concept of giving incentive, giving, you know, doing that thing. So that, that's what I'm saying on that, that's why I said.
Not deputies that have the issue with that.
Well, so that was brought up for dispatch.
That's a dispatch.
So we're 24/7 and we don't have as many people to cover. So it does make it hard when somebody is even out for one week vacation and somebody gets sick. So we're open to like, maybe limiting it like one week. So you're still, right now, most of us are doing one day a week just to stay out there and be relaxed. So we're not getting an actual vacation, we're just getting one extra day a week to try and stay out of there.
Well, that's, I mean, I'm going to say probably times two for dispatch. We've got to do something different. But yeah, still imminent, something like that, I think needs doing there. Just to go cause blank on that, I mean, we've got, I've argued, there's a whole bunch of different people. And that's just, that's pretty much my personality on that one.
I would love one other person. I was like, that was the, maybe we can take a, get at least a week's pay or another person would be a lot better.
What's, what, what, what?
What was that?
Ones, ones can be cheaper if you guys want them. Either hire another person or they get that lump sum of a week. As you've said before, the, the highest cost in Beagre County is, is our employees, people, so. People, granted, we're still, we're still filling, we're still trying to fill a void of something that's not actually what we, what we need to fix the situation. But it's good for now to help them out soon. You have a person that's accruing maximum vacation. They have used or lose it. They just lose all that vacation when they're not here. During times two, some pre-checks.
Because that on page E, I mean, on page 19, it says, I mean, we're probably going to have to sign this, have to figure out something today. Because up the top of E, it says what the policy is.
Yeah.
Two times, you know, within 90 days and then down below it says, no, that being right, we'll do this up with.
Anyone else on that?
On the. You guys have more, you're in on dispatch stuff, how it's affected on the.
What Christine said is essentially what it is, like, I mean, we have talked about, I mean, this might be something helpful and we can't just like save it up because you're saying you're worried by desensitizing it. Maybe having somebody there to show that we tried to take it, but it got denied, something like that, to show that we're not just saving it up, trying it a lump sum. I don't know if that's something that would make it more palatable to you guys.
I know functionally with working for the state, that was a component of it. You had to request the time off and that was denied, you get extension. I don't know if that's what's in the county policy or not, but I thought there was something similar to that.
Is there ever, every time was easier, you know?
Not really at the standing level that we're at right now.
That's what I say. You know, he's our deputy this year, maybe it's your turn next year.
Yeah, we have six people, 24/7, 365. One person's out, one person gets sick, like, it all happens at once every time. But with trying to reduce the overtime, which I tried really hard to keep, but yeah.
We're, next four sets for them too, because we're not, we're not really 24-hour coverage. You don't have a deputy on 24/7. We have that two hours long call for the day shift, kind of two hours on call for the night shift. To cover that, but. That works either way, if somebody has to leave early in the morning, we can work around it. And then we have three, J O commander, sheriff, undersheriff, that all can fall back and cover a shift if they have some. They don't even have reserve, like, we have reserve deputies and post-certified that can take the shifts, but dispatch.
And I haven't been able to cover any deputy stuff because I'm working so many shifts downstairs because we don't have enough employees there, so.
Contagious.
Yeah.
What do you like calling you guys, communication officers in this contract?
I would say communication officers. Look on top of page four, that's sort of spelled out, public safety communication officers, P S C O. However, most of the time in the contract, they're identified together with deputies as sheriff's office employees.
So can we put in there, on an annual basis, instead of saying employees, we can put the public safety communication officers? Will be allowed to be paid out their period of leave or above it, that they were in able use with proof of vacation time being denied? I'm limited, I mean, that, I mean, this is serious, I'm limited. I heard it's for you guys, I don't want to start spreading this thing out. I don't know, it's so, connections, I mean, it's.
No, I mean, that'd be, that'd actually be, so you're, you at least get the monetary order since you're not taking my time.
Yeah, you're, you know, you might put a letter on it, so you can.
Yeah. I just took the leave off and I'm still at 260, 270. I've taken more time off this year than I have the last few years. But that's also resulting in people working by themselves for their entire shift.
We shouldn't have reasons why, man.
Do you know, it seems to be good with that, that proposal? Yes, it'd be good with just applying to the public safety communication officers.
So another thing, quick, on, on the dispatcher's end too. So there is $40, $40 per paycheck for the deputies holding instructor level certifications. Dispatch has the opportunity for some instructor level certifications, whether it be crisis.
There's CISM, it's crisis intervention, stress management.
Yeah, and, and dispatchers also fall under the same basic intermediate and advanced post-certification. So.
Same point that, where in the contract it is?
Yeah.
No, that's the other one I was going to ask you, this under training on page 16.
And that's, but we also, the other question on it is, we have some dispatchers that employee are E M Ts. And when they're not dispatching, they're usually helping the community on handouts too. It's a good resource for us to have around, because we were thinking that should count under the, under the instructor level pay. Would that be all possible? It would be page 16K trains. And that would cover both of those things, we're kind of thinking of there. So it says upon, upon satisfactory completion of these instructor level certifications or specialized training incentive. We might have to reduce some of the wording there.
Specialized training.
Specialized training, sheriff's office employees shall be compensated at a rate of $40 per month, not to $40 per month. For new certi, new certifications will be recognized and compensation paid on the first day of the next pay period after certification is submitted to the finance office. So would there be, so I would think if, if we've got dispatchers that are falling under that instructor level certification, field, field training officer counts for dispatchers at all. But also, in the event we could count that, any of those E M T or specialized training on that. And you don't really see that now?
No.
No. That would be.
Now, I mean, the conversation was adding to it because they ain't going to cost us nothing. Yeah, with the M and O, no reason, I can see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But now, every dollar, because you were talking about the, I just, the second one, there's how many of you?
Six.
There's six dispatchers.
Six dispatchers, y'all certified, that'd be 245, right?
Because it's already added to that incentive paid to college. What do you call, what do you call that, the college pay, I don't know.
And that was assumed as last year. Because it's just a numbers thing.
Yeah, I got nothing else.
On dispatch, you'll figure out that out.
For the education part, we would just be adding on to what was already agreed for the deputies last year, just for the education incentive. The only thing we're really changing is just adding that wording for specialized training. Mainly just to include, since our E M T licenses aren't actually instructor level consideration, but they are specialized and they do help us in our job. So that's basically the only thing that's changed, other than just agreeing what's already been agreed upon for the deputies.
How many of you, how many?
Two of us are currently E M T trained.
That'll qualify for two?
Correct.
Notwithstanding if they end up going, like I said, F T O, CISM instructor.
That would be instructor level, not just, so like, three of us have now gone for CISM training, but we are not instructors. That would not qualify us for that. That would just be for field training officer, someone became a CISM instructor, or something like that. Which, that's something already agreed upon for deputies.
Did you guys say you got education pay last year, or something?
No, that's all. It was, it was agreed upon and we didn't, we didn't go into enforcement on it. It was, that's the exact same as the last year's agreement. Then there is consideration there, any, any training request to approve at Academy, you shall include all wage and test. So after that paragraph in section K, certification for the three primary post, basic intermediate advance. On satisfactory completion of the studies and time limits, will be compensated at the rate of $50 per month per certification and up to $150 per month. New certification will be recognized and compensation will be paid on the first day of the next pay period after certification is submitted to the finance office. So their, their post certificates follow the same as ours. They go to the academy, they, I don't know what their hours or years, years of service look like to meet those, but they have the same pension. So, for example, we have every, every dispatcher within their first year has already got their basic post cert. And then how many are it?
Um, two of us have applied for intermediate. Um, and there are two others that are eligible if they do some more training. Training for dispatch is very limited. We do have less hours for requirement, so it's also not a lot offered for us to go away. Sometimes it takes a while. And we're standing for it, that's fine.
I don't object to it, we got, we're figuring out how to get one more deputy, which is $100 there. So I don't know if there's overall that much money in the pot to do this, like, I hate to say maybe next year. It's in the mail and you're like, oh, terms. But, you know, you're short a person. You're short a person, you're maybe hit a person. Yeah, that's, that's, that's. Scrimming, magic work. That's the public safety meeting in Manila, do we have a ballot? Definitely having that on the ballot would, would help. If we'd have got that there, then no problem. That's the second time they've opened it down, since I've been here. And I, I'm correct, we're having that on the bill, on the ballot in this next year? No, I don't know. No. I don't know. But it, it. Three years previous and then the last year, they want to get down. Isn't quite bad, you know, but definitely big to keep. Isn't that big of a money? It's, because we're looking at that, even the specialized training pay, as we sit right now, with two people certified, dispatchers is $80 a month. Out of your guys' pockets, so there's, are we in that higher of a money situation, worth eighty bucks? How much, did you say, eighty? Yeah, eighty a month. Eighty a month. For the two dispatchers that have the specialized.
Year. It's 960 a year, how about the other?
Education.
Uh, no, the other training, the, the certification.
Basic and E.
Yeah.
You don't have basic?
Everyone has basic, so. And then education.
Wouldn't everybody have a special? Have injectors?
I mean, I mean, is there education?
Four of us have bachelors, two of us have associate level with it, that I know of for sure.
And it would be up to? Up to $100, so it can't be over that $100.
That's pretty tough.
Yeah, I think that's for. Masters.
A bachelor.
Yeah. We don't have any, we don't have any doctors.
So I guess, just in quick, back to the mapping, map, all those incentives for the, applied to dispatch, with just the quick information. quick information, it gave me a probably about fifteen thousand a year additional. Correct, for all those incentives for education, training, specialized training.
I'd say.
That's on the high end, I think, is liberal interpretation.
I don't argue with it, I just. Then her kids, all that blended together with no revenue, but I. There been no questions, where you got that thing back. So, who's, is any of you guys corners in there in here?
No.
No. Uh. Yeah, like fifteen thousand, I don't, uh, we worked through the sheriff's budget and you already just defined this mess. He said, we're, we're the revenue crunch on this thing, of more of this thing. Uh, with this corner thing coming on, we're taking the coroner's budget, trying to shove it in the sheriff's office so we can get those guys that are corners and like.
Yeah.
But we gotta get to office too, so he was, uh, proposing this eighty thousand dollar building up by S and R to get it done. And we were working that in the budget, trying to get that one time only money to do it.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, then it popped up. They're, you, the sheriff and four deputies are usurping the work of the coroner. And you guys are already overworked, so they needed a new deputy, which they've been talking about all the time. So we budgeted, tried to get it budgeted and for a new deputy.
Yeah.
Hopefully we're gonna get hired in November, December. Uh, so it's only half time deputy this year, the way we look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, or the budget wise, we'll look at it. But if we do that, we lost funding for the shelter or the detention office and, or the coroner's office and, um, where he stores all of his, I don't know, just a few guys, evidence they've been storing. So we're short that right now, we're trying to look on that thing. That's, that's what I just thought, totally financially looking at this.
And.
When we sat in that office and they talked about dispatch, well, just getting so they have representation, it ain't gonna cost us no money. Well, I, I told you then, it's sort of bullshit, uh, and here it is, it, it does cost money. And this is, this is a valid reason what we're talking about right now, but it's gonna come from someplace else. Until we got another funding source. And I, like I told the sheriff, he's got that, uh, long wisher, buddy, his place with the big canine people, but, uh, but yeah, try to get money like that rounded up to this, uh, coroner's office, you know, it ain't near as easy as that, just raise money to the canines. So I feel like we're gonna have to figure what to do.
So I think, I mean, yes, it would be great to have this done today, this is presented like very change, but yet there's some changes, it's a proposal, entertaining counterproposals. Um, certainly sooner or later, hopefully, but, um, yeah, this was the intent of providing you with this contract.
That's right. Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna hold you guys to have a sign up right today.
My deliberation. I was just trying to figure out what. But that's what we need to, you know, is budget done, and if that money's gonna go into, it needs to be found before we send the budget.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no proposals to increase wages or anything beyond what was already in the contract, just including them in the contract that was already covered.
And I can't argue with it, it's just. There's something else.
There's doubt that there is change to any of the others.
Where there's not change though, and, and I hope it never comes to that, but dispatchers don't fall under the equipment, equipment side.
There's, it's, it's credits for their ambition and.
And we have to, we, we by law have, and I don't know what the dispatchers do, but by law, we give them twenty hours of contained education training. So eventually the dispatchers will, by just working here, be at that point where they've met their next student. And I.
And compensation for the dispatchers, they're, sort of, they're, they're, uh, you know, because the same way, we gotta get caught back up with schedule A and schedule T or whatever you like to call it. Schedule A agreements form and then the A salary form.
Yeah.
That hasn't been in the last two, or the new contract or that, so I'm assuming it's intended for one of the first start. That's just moves over in front of it, right?
Yeah.
We'll have to make sure we get that with these copies, but, uh.
Yeah.
Before we go back to their training. Well, this is that, uh, special advancement, you guys work for the high school, college, you go to the college football games?
High, you knew high school football.
High school to college? Do you know, rather than that, is there a contract to high school that they pay, or do they pay sheriff's office for that?
There's the.
I know that's a big word, it's spokesman, but I haven't seen it on the revenue side of that thing.
Dave would be one to ask.
I'm gonna go find it, I gotta find out that with the sheriff.
There's also, there was also the contracts through.
Forest service.
Forest service.
That one, we get somebody.
You can get him out of there, we see. I know colleges handle all by the city. So.
And you're, whose types this stuff, are, are we gonna do it or are you gonna do it? Who's doing it?
Well, um, I guess.
Change the.
If you guys are gonna offer some counterproposals to language we propose, I don't think I wanna be heckin' that. I wanna change the thing.
Vacations, that's been messed up the last of the contracts.
I'm gonna blame the teamsters for all this stuff, they're, they just pretty much took over their contract, there was a lot of stuff wrong with it.
And health insurance, this doesn't affect you guys, but this needs to be clarified, we're trying to make damn sure everybody knows that. If health insurance, uh, you're eligible, join medical plan if you work thirty hours a month. All you guys work thirty hours plus. But down at C, it says the county shall provide health insurance for employees and continue to pay a hundred percent of the premium. If you're fullback, if you're thirty hours, it's pro rated, I, I don't know, we probably ought to get a word or two in that. But if you only, if you only work three quarter time, you get three quarters of the health insurance and you pay the rest. But yeah, if you ever, mind, I don't know if you ever get part-time people, but. Three quarters, I mean, it's, it's at three quarter times where you're at.
Yeah.
If you're less than three quarter time, we don't have to offer insurance, but I just wanted to make that clear, I might add any words into that thing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any problems with that, nobody's part-time.
That happened, that's just happened under the coroner's office, now she's never got a loan ready for halftime, visiting employee time. That's where it takes an effect of this day insurance. Insurance is, you know, that is our experience, so we will continue to do the hundred percent if you're fullback or so. I don't know, this, at this time, I, but add it up to fifteen, I don't. Sorry, I don't think fifteen's there till we figure out the next employee and, and other ones. Bodies are the most important thing in your, yeah.
What, what does it cost you guys on average then, like, say we were to hire a new, say one person leaves, we have to hire a new position? What does that, what does that cost you guys on average?
What a new person costs?
Yeah. Like, the initial hire, like, how much more is it than regular?
But you gotta, if you, with, with you guys, you gotta suit them up.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, dispatches. Dispatches. I don't, you know what you make annually, so it's just a hair more than that. We gotta come up. And you guys ain't gonna believe this, but, uh, what you take home in your paycheck and what the county ends up paying students, dressing.
Oh, way, yeah.
It's, fifteen going for that up, about that.
Twenty-five.
Luke takes home ninety-six, seven, Kenny Derry. This, this is a public number, so it don't matter, uh, you're a hundred thousand, six hundred dollars. Quentin Wheatley, hundred and three. Fields gets an eight and seven.
No, it's all the answers.
Beans one oh two, you know, so that's basically what we budget to do this thing. Dispatch, you probably don't have quite so many cars, they ain't cars, that's just payroll dispatch. Eighty-five, 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 eighty-six, eighty-six, so it's eighty-six. Basically eighty-six and they clinch, you gotta come up with ninety, ninety-five, that. Jail.
What does it end up, like, if we were to, if we were to see turnover rate in dispatch or turnover rate in deputy, so it'd cost you more every time we have to hire somebody? Because then we have the academy.
Dispatch is big time.
Yeah.
Dispatch.
Yeah, we have a lot of, it's a lot of training.
And then the.
Yeah, like.
So we look, we look at the things, we look at the things for dispatch, now, I understand we can't get, we can't get staffed. And I wish we could just get staffed, staff them if things look can, that's reality. But the stuff like being able to pay off the vacation incentive for the extra education they have, is just stuff that'll keep people around here longer. I, it makes me, it makes me sad seeing good dispatchers, good officers, need to figure agencies. And the grass is always greener when that happens, but these kind of things are what lets hold on to local faces that the community knows. That stick around, that provide money back into our economy here. It's, it's more of an investment than it is, uh, maybe just throwing money in a.
I know. I hear you, kid, oh, it's just. And the bill, they just have, well.
And you start to see that turnover and like, they can't, they can't take vacation, you'll start to see turnover because, well, dispatchers.
Well, that's true, that's very true.
And may not, may not ever go back to middle line of community service because of the experience they have.
Being that too clear, spread over three departments. And speaking of these, dispatch and the jail and all that, you take what you just said, that a lot. It was enough.
Speaking of young person.
You had three people, if you wanted, you're right, and you're over.
But speaking of the young person in, in a community service role like this, there, there's a shortage of people. There's not a lot of twenty-eight year old guys, there's not a lot of thirty-year-old guys wanting to do it. And if we keep burning out dispatchers and burning out deputies, there's gotta be some giving.
Housing to get somebody here from another agency or even.
Yeah, I don't argue with you at all.
Housing be a, a big thing, I, I'm gonna put it out there, but like, our, our workload is, is getting too much for the amount of employees we have. We saw with you guys too, your workload's getting so big that you had to create a position and not that Dave's job is not needed. But she's created and helped to get all of your guys' stuff done. Same thing with justice court, they need the second court because they're so far up. Where the money come from for those positions, because when they got those done and when she was hired, it wasn't, oh, you'll have to get a mill levy.
There's days, she's been around forever.
Yeah, that, that job's been here forever.
Long, I bet it's many.
Do you get a new employee?
For all fifty years, it's been, every year.
It has been a court for?
Oh, yeah. Forever.
Okay. But then like the.
Over here is due to all the land sales and all that stuff, but see they charge.
They've got a new one.
They charge for all the printing and all that, and every time you enter a book and record and do all that, and so they got a revenue stream that kind of comes across the counter. That assists a lot, you know, that, and then I often thought about that with traffic violations and all that. Why couldn't come across the desk of revenue, you know?
We don't, we don't.
Be traffic. No. No, it's not, most of that highway patrol or stuff like that, but it's evidently goes into someplace. I don't.
I'm like, we don't get a whole lot of revenue, but everything starts with the phone call. Spending the deputy, somebody going downstairs, like, it never gets smaller and smaller as the higher you go up, but.
I never, surprised me, second time it was phoned about, because we didn't raise the amount, figured it'd go through. Right?
Right.
Well, and then it didn't make it big time.
And with the increase of people in the community where it increases revenue for these guys, that also increases our workload, but sheriff's department sees not it.
So we don't, you don't gather revenue like that.
Right.
And the courts, the courts that judicial kicks in on the state level, they kick in, you know, because it, the courts are not just us.
Right, but what I'm saying is like, the revenue earned from here, you know, because of the housing, all the new people coming in and the increase in population, literally only increases our work, but we don't get the extra. And I don't know how to help that, I know that runs under, you know, MCA and that, that type of stuff, right?
And it's, uh, I don't know. How many, you, I mean, let's just go back to this specialized training you were talking about, uh, that forty dollars a month or whatever?
Yeah.
Does everybody got that or just a couple?
On the, two.
Oh, on the distance.
Right now, there's just, if we were, you're kind of with the EMT, sir, under that specialized training, which the, I apologize for wording on that, it, it changed. So right now, there's just two of us, uh, we are looking at trying to have someone become an FTO, so we actually can have a more formalized training process so then, or if somebody does, but right now, there's just two.
And on the education stuff, there's four.
There's four people with bachelors.
Two with.
I, I, four with, two with a bachelor and then associates at least, and then four for the with bachelors, so. Two with a bachelor and associates, two with a bachelor's, and then I think two that are just regular.
So, or the, or some of the bachelors, the same with the incentive, the forty dollar ones?
No.
I, yeah, I guess I didn't read that.
Um, so I have a bachelor's and the EMT license, but the, the other one with the EMT license does not have a bachelor's.
All right, well, that's what I was just trying to get to, something just to get to this year. I was just trying to, but that's a long ways from fifteen, when you came up with fifteen.
No, but the fifteen applied that everybody that said they had a bachelor's, I, I encountered for four hundred dollars a month. Like saying that's just, that's just, I guess as a real liberal back of the napkin, um, guesstimate, it was not, it was like, this is, it was the absolute high end.
Fifty dollars for a bachelor. That is an investment in qualified, qualified employees and, granted, we, we don't have to have a degree in our job and how it's necessary to have one, but.
And bachelor's and associate's?
Yeah, you get, you gain, you gain different sets of knowledge from having people that went through that college system. The more, more qualified, I can tell you, your own training.
The way they got it now, is it thirty-six or four? I'm trying to keep up. All right, we're definitely sitting down, so it's fair, I just, I'm just gonna flat rate this year.
Something.
For dispatch.
He's talking about just doing a flat.
Take them ever, time six of you guys to get it into the budget and we'll figure out this training thing.
I don't know if that's worth it, you guys, or, I mean, is that fair to you?
I would, I would discuss that.
Yeah.
Should we get that number back to you, we're at that right now?
We got it. Incentive, I don't wanna say charter, but he's off in the flat three and I see what he's doing, ratioing it out. You know, but I, with six certifications, two in one bracket and four in another, is that what you're saying?
What are you talking about with the education?
Yeah, I don't know, so all six of them have the post base. Okay, six of them's worth fifty bucks, so that's three hundred dollars.
Two hundred and.
Twelve is thirty-six, I think two hundred and eighty?
Two hundred and eighty.
No, but, so. There's, there's three buckets that are gonna be thrown into this, so first of all, it's the education, you're really. Wouldn't get down to actually what would be a credit contract if you want to get for that, so. Education, that's right, I'll just write it down first.
Oh, okay.
How many have associates?
We're including that.
No, just dispatch.
Um, at least two of us.
Okay. Then how many have bachelors?
Four.
Okay. Those associates of those have bachelors as well, that's another thing, I'll look at the contract language, is that additive, not to exceed a hundred? Or is it, you got not to exceed a hundred?
So, right now, I mean, if you got an associate and a bachelor, why don't we just count them as bachelors? That's what I'm saying. So. I mean, you got one. That's where I, that's where I came up with the thirty-six hundred. I didn't know if that's right. Long ways from fifteen now, can we?
Yeah.
Education. Can you say if each sheriff's office bought a fifty dollars per month full time, bachelor's free?
Yeah, it would be, it would be a sum. So if you have associates and a bachelor's, then it'd be twenty-five plus fifty, because I read this contract.
See, I don't read it that way, because then if you went and got your master's degree, you'd get a twenty-five, fifty plus seventy-five?
Not sixty.
No. If you, if you got your ba, master's, you'd get seventy-five. So every time you get a new degree, you go twenty-five bucks a year. Not Cuban again. Because then if you hired a staff, you ain't talking about.
Let's go with that then?
Oh?
Yeah.
So where do you get, where do you get?
So, I'll go back.
So then we're looking at the four people with the bachelor's degrees, and that's gonna be.
Two hundred.
Two hundred bucks.
Because the associate's also a bachelor.
Yes, yeah.
So that's two hundred bucks come up, is what I'm telling you. And there's two with associates, and then there's.
But they're the same people, one's a bachelor.
So. Five, two degrees.
Two licenses. So you're two hundred a month, and then there's another thing that. Yeah, I had six certifications, now.
There's three different things we're looking at. So right now, we're just looking at education, so education would just be two hundred dollars a month for the degrees that we are there right now. For, for four of the six, yeah. And then separately from that, it's the, for post basic and, or. The post certifications, basic, intermediate, advanced, that's separate from education and separate. That's like the academy post certification to the.
Yeah. So how many people have basic?
All six.
All six. How about, um, intermediate?
Two.
So there's four of you with basic?
Yes.
And that's fifty dollars?
It goes up.
Correct. And two of you have intermediate, and shoot a hundred? Okay, and then you got just the.
Just the specialized training.
Specialized training.
And right now, there's just two of us.
That'd be total four hundred eighty, correct?
And there's two of you with intermediate?
Two hundred.
Yes, yes.
That's way below that. Yeah, it's only thirteen hundred, just one tenth of that.
So it's fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You're.
We're finishing up the math.
He was at fifteen now, so I'm like thirty-six. Is that six hundred bucks?
Well, I'm, I'm doing the math.
I haven't been doing the math, we're doing it right now, but I'm sure that's.
Six hundred bucks. Okay, so eight hundred.
Seventy.
Seventy-two hundred a year.
Yeah.
That's half of fifty thousand.
And then two of them are able to go up to intermediate if they wanted to.
Yeah, it's, it's on our end, we're, we're the ones that have to go through that process. We have to apply for intermediate. We just have to ensure we meet those standards when we apply. And then it's the same, because both Christine and I apply at the same time, so.
Jack and Ryan have the time, I just.
Can we put a period right there? And see if that'll pass muster? But not even worry about this third thing we're talking about. So we're, we're, you know, that was basically what I was trying to come back to, the way to get that, get that ten thousand extra dollars, so. Oh, yeah, we're there.
So I'm sorry, what was that?
On these two. So that's what I'm just saying, just put a period there.
I'm not sure where you're saying put a period, sorry.
Well, let's not start talking about EMT training and the special program. Specialized training.
Yeah, for education and the post basic, but not the specialized.
That's what I'm saying, what's that number?
Seventy-two.
To go. Seventy-two hundred. Ninety-six, because they have the.
Well, that's what he said.
No, I said, like I said, I was just pulling numbers out, just on general things that don't happen, so.
Talking about their facts and all that, what's seventy-two hundred?
What'd you say, for post, yeah, for these, for whatever they are.
For post and education.
For both. For post and education, just another twenty-four, right?
Yeah, yeah. It would be. If you're applying what the deputies already get to what they're getting, not the argument for the EMT stuff, we're gonna flush that. But if you're applying the certifications and the education on the deputies get for the dispatchers, that's gonna be seventy-two hundred dollars. Based on the information they gave me on their post credentials and their education.
So that's where you wanna put the period, is that seventy-two hundred? Is that what you're saying?
Do we wanna, are we, I'm not sure about.
I think we.
I just sent a message.
I think we'll look at the numbers, though, because they, uh. You've got four deputies with post certification, that'd be said.
Everyone.
Or four dispatch with the bachelor's degrees. No, not the education ones, the, the.
Oh, yes, four with, four with basic certification.
So they get fifty bucks a month?
Yes. And two with intermediate.
That's two hundred. There's two more. Would be get a hundred bucks a month, right?
Yep.
Alright, so that's four hundred dollars a month.
Yep.
Alright. Four hundred dollars a month for that piece. It's forty-eight hundred dollars.
Correct.
I mean, you're pretty sure on the education piece.
That's the one part, I think we're, we're confirming that it is the four bachelors. We're just not sure if there's a fifth dispatcher who does have her association, I'm not sure if it was completed or not, so.
And of course, that's the proper certification, as long as we all have our proper certifications in business office. So you're at there, you're at that seventy-two?
So we're good doing just education and the post certification, where the only difference there might be is there might be one dispatcher who has an associate's, we just haven't confirmed it yet. So that would just be.
So where's the number at?
So, so that number, if she does have the associates, that would just add whatever it would be.
Twenty-five bucks a month.
Twenty-five bucks a month. So that would be the only difference, is we just haven't confirmed that yet.
So that's. A lot different things about.
Yes.
Half.
You guys okay, uh. Starting that paper? Not going back one month? Is that just right? We got new payroll over there, because you know. We, this, if we did this, it'd just be affect starting whenever this, you pick, so everyone starts working on the seventeenth of August. So next pay, next paycheck you would get, not half, and you go back one.
Yeah, we'd do that, yeah.
If you would, that'd be, that'd save us a hell of a mess over there. And we will get that certificate or that, uh. Certification. Wrote down on a letter for each one of those people, right?
Yes, we can do that.
So, so. What we were planning on doing is everybody that's got the associates degrees, is make a photocopy of it, submit those to the, we needed it in personnel.
At least, uh, Sheriff Wynn has a lot of those, but we'll confirm that one of those.
That. Yeah.
I think you guys should collectively take it through this.
Or I can take it.
So it sounds like.
I don't know.
No.
Okay, so it sounds like functionally basic, I mean, what we presented to you, you read through, because you have the math works out, that's why everybody initially.
The math and the. Correct, the table of contents from that.
Well, you, you, the sharpest mind still gets to grow by the gap of contents, so, um, do you want us to make those corrections to that, and then give to you for signature?
Yeah.
So.
And then the include just dispatch on the payout of vacation.
See, what's that?
Include just dispatch.
For, for permission, you get the permission for vacation.
Okay. And then do you want to acknowledge the insurance portion there, for full-time, one percent, full-time employees, I am appropriated for part-time. Is that correct?
Once they go to thirty hours. If they're less than thirty hours, they are, we can't, we can't.
Yeah, so. Okay.
What's dispatch now, you said again, or dispatch, are.
I like safety communication.
We'll just call.
I'd love to say, you know, I didn't write in there, I was gonna put slash and these things.
We can.
That's, that's just all the years.
It's just our fancy.
I opened it up, I was looking for dispatch, no. It's just fine.
I get slowly chipping away from that being a deal.
Oh, actually.
I bet it is, dude. Since I started dying my hair gray.
Can I go check out those corporate real quick? Over that, are you guys looking to get the signatures done today, or?
We've got all three of us caught.
We can get the changes done real quick, so. Give that to. Because it will.
I met your dad yesterday. No, I read your.
We'll, we'll go right here.
Hold on.
Yeah, um, you'll be listening, I can do that for you.
He told me he came in and talked to you the other day with the.
Oh. I just wrote down all my notes.
Okay.
You told that Justin guy's name?
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, James Charles and Bonnie are creepy, they're just, they just. Jay, I mean, I get it, Jay bought it. He's one person that reads back.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not very chill. Started this whole.
Yeah, I've learned that, they'll hold it together, gates are wired together, things.
Fell back to. The generation from the can flu, southwest, near.
I'm good at that, thanks. Don't know that I tracked the whole. So.
Yep.
Nice to see you, yeah, isn't it? Yeah, I doubt you did.
Yeah.
I was listening, I just. I have, I wish the resolution, I'm hiding it right on this morning. Do that. Yeah, there was a resolution with all the papers that was in the.
The mail, yes?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Well, the mail was other.
Oh, okay.
So how much money are they talking, are they talking?
We do that and all that.
That's great, I know where.
Yeah.